And intense than a bar restaurant. Because if you, most restaurants on Siesta Key either serve lunch and breakfast or lunch dinner. And if it's 150 seats and you're in season, you think you're going to have the tables turn maybe twice a meal. There's 300, you have 600 folks coming to this location on a 24-hour period, say. Which would have 60 cars. So, you know, so that's the math that we're doing, 600 or 60, which one do you think is better? And so, but that would actually entail doubling the density from 26 to 52 units per acre, which would again be in violation of the comp plan. But we thought it was more a better compromise. What scares us all is that every community in Sarasota County, if you think you're safe, if you think you've got everything under control, you know, think about Siesta Key. In 1999, there was a community plan that was done with the county and the citizens, both commercial and residential on Siesta Key, that came up with this plan. And what we wanted, how we wanted to see Siesta Key be developed and basically preserved. That was the initial step towards, and by the way, during that time incorporation was being threatened. So then, so the CSK overlay district was developed based on that community plan. So you think, okay, now we've got a codified element that's going to keep things where we want it, scale and that type of thing. So then the developers come in and they want to do these hotels. And they got the special exception that Lord has fought and won. So, so if you think about it, if you're a community and you think you got it, you're safe for it and losing because they're in violation of the comp plan, can contemplate changing the comp plan to make sure they get what we're looking for.
And just to clarify, you have to, to make a comprehensive land use change in the comp plan, it requires a super majority.
Super majority.
Four of five votes, not a simple majority.
No, that's true. And I've been on the, the end of the, my four one vote seems to be my mantra. But when I run for reelection, I was telling, my motto is going to be, "I'm the one." So keep that in mind. But anyway, so it bothers us all that, and it should bother everybody in Sarasota County.
Because isn't it true that what's being contemplated would affect everyone?
Unlimited intensity, four hotels, up to 15% of the commercial property, which I think is nonsense, to be polite, in that the folks, the folks that own commercial property that aren't in that lucky 15%, you think they're going to sit back and say, "Well, hold it, hold it." A camel under the tent thing and, and so, you know, it's going to look like Lauderdale or Miami Beach or Clearwater before you know it. And we'll lose the village. I predicted we'll lose the village, I thought in five years, but with this latest effort, it may be three. And anyway, we could go on and on about that.
Do you have any thoughts about, there's so much money in these elections, right? And, you know, developers, if you just want to say they, they do their best to buy county commissioners. They want to buy.
Well, that's rude.
Put people, I can say it, you can't say it, but they, they want people who are going to tell them yes, right? What, what do we need to do? It's our county, right? And they, they are winning elections. Do you have ideas about how we need to change as citizens to, to affect better representation?
Well, you know, the, I spoke before the League of Women Voters. And they asked me, "What, what can we do when the commission doesn't vote, you know, the way we want them to vote?" And I said, "Well, let me see, nothing." Because we, we have the power. So I, so what I said to the ladies is that you're the League of Women Voters. And so you need to vet the candidates. And you need to look into their background, what they, what their belief system is, who they work with. You know, I just, you know, and, and push it. I said, "We have to stop looking at elections like a sporting event and that whoever has the most money must be the best candidate." And that's not the way it works. You have to find folks that have character and, and are grounded enough to not be tempted. Now, in full disclosure, those, those folks that developers did give me a good deal of money to win. I'm not sure that's going to happen in the reelection. But I told them what my thinking was when they were interviewing me to see if I was worthy. And I told them that I didn't like the big hotels on Siesta Key and Siesta Promenade didn't throw me. And so, but I think I was the lesser of evils perhaps, I don't know. But I won and thank you to all the folks out there that voted for me. It was a chance you had to take because I had to convince the neighborhoods in Sarasota that a Republican architect on Siesta Key gave a damn. And so that's been my mission, Esther and I, my wife. I've been going to every neighborhood and community that invites us.
That's fabulous. Even outside your district, I'm.
Well, no, we, we go everywhere. You know, it's, it's a community, you know, we're all in this together. Single member districts is really easier for the candidates.
Yeah, a lot easier.
Kathy, I had new tires on my car last time.
It's like running for Congress.
Well, it's just you're all over the place. I mean, and so, but you just have the district. And this district, because each district has approximately the same number of registered voters, but this district has the population more dense. So it's less miles that I put on my car. But, but no, we go down to Englewood and Northport and.
And out to the rural, rural area.
Oh, the rural, oh, go out there and see Becky out there, yeah.
So I think one of the other elephants in the room, you know, Mike Hutchinson and his wife have been litigating about the, you know, the big subdivisions that are being approved out east. And, you know, maybe the writing may be on the wall, the dime may be cast. Really in 2013, when the county commission unraveled the 2050 plan, all this stuff started being ushered in in terms of the density that, that's slated for a rural area. I don't know, I'm curious your take on whether or not that can be undone, but in.
Well, you know, that's the question actually I asked Jonathan Lewis to, that's, what is left? There's a good deal of development that's already been approved. And when I met with Becky Ash out there at the, at the old schoolhouse, what's happened, they, they asked me, they said, "Well, you know, just stop rezoning. Just stop rezoning." And legally, we can't, you know, if, if a property owner has the right to ask for a rezone, it's hard to, you know, unless you can find a reason like there's no water in sewer, then it's a lot easier. But if, if they have the infrastructure there, it's tough. And so.
So you're saying, I want to back up, you're saying that there's no really legitimate basis to deny rezones for.
Well, there's legitimate, but they have to be really legitimate.
Okay, super legitimate.
Well, I mean, because what, you know, you're going against property rights so they go before a judge and you got the Bird Harris Act and all the stuff that gets threatened along the way. But what I was telling her, the more I looked into it, look into, and they're custom made for each property. So if you want to hunt on your property or fish, or you want to, if you want to put up maybe another house or two because of family members, you can do that. And what you do essentially is you, you take away the development rights.
And they get compensated for the development.
They get compensated for it. And so, but not as compensated as much as, you know, somebody coming in and dropping $100 million on the kitchen table saying, "What do you think?" So, so, you know, if, if the parents and the grandparents, you know, want to screw their kids, that's the thing to do. It's a joke, folks. But anyway, it's, it's, you know, because that's what you're doing, you know? Because what's, what's happened is the grandparents or maybe the great grandparents and the parents who worked the farm and loved the land, the kids don't want to do it.
Yeah.
And they really don't want to do it if they can become millionaires, you know, and so.
They want to get their inheritancees.
That are out there. It's really, that's, that's what I told her, you want to save it, you better get everybody together and have them save it.
Be proactive.
Because you're going to have to, you have to save yourselves, you got to save it, you know? And, you know, time's running out. That's, you know, time's running out.
Yeah, time is running out.
Fortunately, we have about 36% of Sarasota County that's undeveloped. Majority of that is my state park and Oscar Shire. And the county has an SLP program, it's an environmentally sensitive land program, which the voters had voted in years ago to put money aside to buy endangered land.
Environmentally sensitive land, yeah.
Environmentally sensitive land, which is really ridiculous if you think about the term because all the land's environmentally sensitive. I mean, until you pave it, then it's very less, it's less sensitive after that.
So I want to kind of pivot to something else. Early childhood education programs were recently cut by the Board of County Commissioners. And those have such an impact. You've got the school board squawking about reading scores, which have always been challenged. It's not like it's new. But on the other hand, we've got the county commission cutting funding for a proven intervention that would improve reading scores. We're seeing the county commission be stingy with arts organizations, you know, wanting to pull money from arts organizations. What's going on there? I know that you're, I'm asking you to kind of give us a lens into your colleagues because this isn't your point of view.
Well, I'm an architect, not a psychiatrist.
No, but you work with them. You do work with them, yeah.
We do, but the interesting thing about the sunshine laws is we can't discuss anything until we get up there. So it's a little bit like a game show where you're not sure, you know, what the questions are going to be and how the answers are going to go. Yeah, I mean, I, the gist of it, and I guess most people know that I voted to, to keep all the funding that the advisory groups had advised the county commission. And that was another one of those one-four votes. But the, apparently, apparently, if you, and this is what I've told not-for-profits and folks that are looking for the county to help, you're, you need to show how you save taxpayers' money.
Okay.
Whether it's jail diversion, whether you're staying out of the court system or whether or not you're not, you know, the sheriff isn't picking you up.
What about creating jobs? Would that be compelling?
Well, you know, we had to fight to keep the EDC funded, which expands, you know, existing businesses and invites new businesses and new industry in. And there was, I don't know if, to get off track a little bit on, because you brought it up. When the EDC came before us, there was some discussion that they weren't, they weren't producing enough jobs for the amount of money that they were given by the taxpayers. But when looking at their portfolio and what they were talking about, they had created, or the businesses that they were involved with had, had spent $50 million on improvements to their properties. And my comment was, well, that's $50 million that went to contractors and architects and furniture people, local folks. So maybe it didn't, didn't expand the workforce, but it kept the workforce from being unemployed.
Yeah, the EDC did bring cyber ninjas to Sarasota, so that's kind of.
Oh.
Do you know cyber ninjas, does everybody, okay, yeah, yeah. But, but to the point of early childhood education and arts.
Well, you know, I, you know, I believe it's important. My wife Esther's an educator, 35 years up in New York City and an arts teacher. My daughter is a teacher at Sarasota School of Arts and Science. My sister's a retired school teacher up in St. Pete. I, I went to school. I was a child once.
You did well.
So, you know, it's, and I'm now, was asked to be on the Early Learning Coalition. And I haven't, their first meeting's coming up here, so I haven't, haven't gone there yet. So I'm, I'm going to try my darndest, I can tell you, because these are things that are important. I mean, as we all know, for those of us that have been parents and grandparents, you only get one shot. And it's all on the job training. And so you gotta, you need all the help you can get from folks that, that are professionals. Because, you know, as the, as the tree is bent, it grows or whatever the saying is. I mean, it's just, you only have this one shot. And you gotta give it your best shot.
Right, right.
And pray to God that it works. Because otherwise they're going to wheel you out in traffic.
Your kids choose your nursing home, right?
That's all you're shooting for, man, just don't kill me.
So I have, this was a question that was sent in to me. And just a little setup, there was a medical freedom resolution, yeah, that passed. And it was an agenda item, it was not clear that there was going to be a vote. So I have two, two questions for you regarding county commission agenda. So here's the first one. Would you be in favor of a county operations policy that would require that the initial presentation of a proposed resolution and a vote on that resolution, particularly those that have a community impact, which is like this medical freedom, are not voted upon at the same session? So in other words, it's kind of like land use. There's a first hearing, there's a consideration, and then there's a second hearing. Because really, from this agenda, there was only one side there that was very vocal. They knew what was going on, but the public, just reading the agenda regarding this medical freedom issue probably didn't have much of a heads up.
Well, I, I didn't have a heads up.
Did you?
It wasn't until I got contacted that said, you know, this is coming up. And I said, "No, I didn't know that." And, and so I did my homework before. And I don't know if you, if you've heard, heard me at that particular hearing, but I was taken aback by the fact that if you read verbatim from the previous board meeting, the attorney was given direction to look into it, not to write it.
And so it became way more than.
Well, it became more than I thought it should be because it was, I thought it was attacking Sarasota Memorial and other health professionals and without them having an opportunity to speak to what they felt about this. And you have to remember with this, with the pandemic, it was a worldwide panic. I mean, we didn't know what was going on. We didn't, remember you had to leave your packages in your garage overnight and, I mean, you know, all this advice that we were given. I mean, I think the president even said he should take a shot of bleach and try to put some light in your body. So, so it's safe to say that a lot of people didn't know a lot of things. And so, you know, but we know, know a lot more now. And, and I wanted Sarasota Memorial to have the chance and the physicians that were, to say, you know, hey, I mean, with this medical freedom thing, if you had a contagious disease and you wanted to leave the hospital, they'd have to let you out. And, you know, is that a good idea?
Yeah, there's a public health issue there for sure.
You know, I mean, if you're going to danger others, you know, maybe you ought to hang around a little longer until we get a handle on it. So, so I mean, there's.
Do you think though that the process could be tightened up?
I think you're right, I think it probably should be, you know? But it, but it was just a, it's just a proclamation, it was a resolution, it was toothless. And that was one of the comments I made, are we actually trying to solve a problem here? Are we just, you know, stalking? So, so it really, it.
Placating a vocal group of people. So I have a friend up in northern Virginia and they're very involved. In fact, her husband, he's also my friend, just won the county commission seat. They put out, this is Fauquier County in Virginia, and this is kind of a rural county outside of Washington DC. This is where Jackie Kennedy would ride horses. They're very protective of their land. The, the agendas come out for the county commission two weeks or more before the meeting. And then citizens get together and they review the agenda and they decide, you know, they dissect it, decide what they like, what they don't like. And boy, they go in there and, you know, they give very informed input. In Sarasota County, the agenda comes out very quickly ahead of the meeting.
A week.
Yeah, or less than a week, yeah.
No, no, it's the Tuesday before.
Well, is it, well, my experience, I'm not going as often as I used to and I'm, you know.
Good for you.
I feel a little better, but still I care. But, you know, as much as even just two or three days, this was back in the 2010s.
They used to be just a couple of days. So it is a week, a Tuesday.
What do you think about two weeks? So that people truly can, because everyone's got a job in life, you know?
I hear what you're saying. I hear what you're saying, because I, it's a lot of homework for me. At least these agenda packets can be anywhere between, well, as low as 2,600 pages. And I think the most was 7,800. And so there's a lot there. But, but in some cases, we would have it, we have, you know, a meeting in another two weeks. You know, in all honesty, a week, if you take the time. But I mean, there's folks that know, know things that I don't even know. I mean, I'll, I'll get emails saying, you know, "We're against something." And I don't even know it's on the agenda. So I don't know, you know, on occasion I do that. And so most of the time, I, my routine is I download it on the Tuesday when it's out, just like everyone else would. And I have full attention on and I circle the ones that I feel that they do. And most of them are the land use, or spending, but anyway, so.
Here's what I'd ask you to consider, because for you, this is what you're doing. But for people out in the world, a week, they have, they have a schedule already, right? And say they want to talk to their county commissioner. It's, it's not a lot of time to actually really do any effective advocacy or gathering.
From the number of emails I get, it's semi-effective.
Do emails work?
Yeah, they do, they do. I mean, I, I'm a little anal in that I.
You read them?
Organized, organized, that was the term. In that I have folders for all the, so, and so under citizen comments, I have folders. And then as the issues come in, I read them and then I put them in the folder.
Wow, I think that's, you're unusual.
Well, I've been told that.
Yeah, I think you are.
But this is the first time. This is the first time in a good way, though.
Yeah, yeah, in a good way, in a good way.
But anyway, so, I mean, they do work. I mean, you know, I read them and get a feel for, you know, but, you know, I mean, this is my little speech here.
I know, it's not just your decision.
Well, the thing is that we have a representative form of government. And so that's why it's important that you elect somebody that has the ability to make decisions that you agree with. Now, my own family doesn't agree with me 100% of the time, so I don't expect you all to either. But if you have someone that you feel strongly that, yeah, okay, however they're voting, maybe, maybe they, they know what they're, you know, what they're doing. Or they, you know, and people that want to talk to me or meet with me, I'll discuss why I voted for anything or didn't vote for it. But it's, it's, no, you can email, continue to email or meet. It does get a little tough when it's a week, you know, a week to go. But I, but I, you know, I'll make myself available, you know?
So I want to open it up to question, I've got other things, but Table 17 has a question. Please let everyone know who you are.
Hi, I'm Tommy Nolan, and thanks for being here tonight, Mark. Kathy, great questions in opening. I'm just curious, the one to four, the one plus four seems to be the motto in the run. And I just wondered, would you ever think that there's another way to do it? Where you get another one-two, you know, block and tackle alongside of you so it becomes three to two?
Well, John Thaston, who I admired for a long time being county commissioner, he's told me, "Don't give up." That he had one-four votes and then finally got two-three and then three-two. But he had 12 years, you know, and the max I got is eight. So I'm not sure. But, but again, it's important when you're interviewing your candidates that you're of like mind. And, and it's the votes, it's not the money. So get the vote out, just get the vote out.
Just one quick follow-up question for you, Mark. So just out of curiosity, do you have an example of like a constituent who said, "Hey, I don't want to talk to you," or "Here's an email," and you were like, "Hey, this is, this makes sense." Like it changed your mind, it kind of gave you a different perspective. Because I've always kind of taken the notion that there's always three sides to a story, you know? And I don't know them until I know them. So do you have an example in your tenure here, and I know you've got a lot of experience before this, before the board, where it's like, "Oh yeah, that's a different, that's a way to go at it."
Absolutely, there's, there's, usually when it has to do with redevelopment, that, well, instance, there was, there was a medical building down in Venice. And it was in a commercial area and it was already used as a medical building. And, and so I thought, well, this should be, you know, pretty much cut and dry. I think they maybe, they wanted to, they wanted to expand their parking and maybe do a little addition. I don't know, something, it's pretty innocuous, I thought. And then the neighbor, you know, the neighborhood showed up at the meeting. And I don't remember them getting many emails on it, but I do remember that a few of the neighbors showed up that lived in the area. And upon further review, there was problems with, the property wasn't zoned right. They were planning a second floor and they, and that wasn't clear. There's a lot of things that were, and it just, what seemed like very simple went south in a hurry. And there was, there was a 5-0 vote to forget it. So there was, there was one, one that, that a developer was buying a Methodist church property. And I can't remember which road it was on, maybe Lockwood Ridge or something like that. And, and the current zoning was one unit for five acres. And they wanted to rezone it so they could, so I think they were allowed maybe three units on the property as zoned. The church was leaving and they wanted to put in 66 units.
Apartments or what?
I don't know, but I know they weren't affordable and that, that was my question. I said, you know, shouldn't you, you know, you're, you're getting 63 more units. So don't you think, and like 15% I think is in our, in our comprehensive plan, that could, so we're looking at nine units, couldn't you make nine of the units affordable?
Yeah, so when you get an increase like that, you're supposed to have 15% of the units.
Well, you're supposed to ask for it, but you have to make the developer. Well, you're supposed to ask for it, but you have to make the developer whole, which is.
Yeah, okay, but that's the idea, right?
So anyway, the, so the more I, the more I asked questions about it, um, I had a real problem with it. And, uh, and so, and this is, Nancy Dieter was still with us, God rest her soul. Um, and, uh, the, the, the commission voted five-oh to deny it because it was a violation of the comp plan. So that was, that was hardening. Now, I did, on the loss side, we go, let's do a loss. Um, oh, I'm trying to think of the community up in North Sarasota off. Oh goodness, I can't remember the name of it.
DeSoto Acres?
No, it's next to DeSoto Acres.
Longwood Run?
Longwood Run. That was it.
No, not.
No, 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 it's.
Longwood Run.
Oh, is it part of the Meadows? Well, it was developed years ago by Pierre Revolta. Yeah, yeah. And, uh, had, had about a ten, maybe twelve little subdivisions. And winding roads and lots of trees and, and they had a, a community center that was, um, that had like a, maybe a dozen tennis courts and a swimming pool and clubhouse. But for whatever reason, the neighborhood, the Longwood Run folks, didn't have to belong. And so over time, the, the place was losing money. And so they wanted to sell, and they were selling it to a developer who wanted to put, um, god, something like sixty units or something on this piece of property that looked like it was, it was urban, you know, it's just right next to each other. And, uh, and I said, how does this meet the, the density? Because the density was, you know, far much, and, and they were essentially using all the density for the entire property, the whole, whole property.
You mean the whole development?
Development. And so they're taking all the capacity that was left because everything's, and they're putting it in this shoebox.
Which is a freebie for them. I mean, they didn't really own that density.
No, no, but they grabbed it all. And, uh.
They, they have a way of doing that.
Well, it can happen. And the neighborhood came out and I, anyway, I voted against it. I said it wasn't, it wasn't compatible. And, uh, and that was, I lost that one.
Mark, thank you so much for being here and, and Kathy and, and, you know, this is the first public meeting I've been to in ages. And I'm just grateful that you all are here. And, uh, and I was thinking, Mark, we used to run into each other at planning meetings.
Right.
What a novel idea. And in two thousand ten, the new governor closed the state planning office. So responsibility for our comp plan at the state level disappeared. And almost simultaneously, there were at least three of you up there that seemed to disregard the plan that we had on the ground. So what I heard you say is just a couple more of you and we, planning might matter. But the plans we've got are old. And what do you think about a civic initiative that went across the board? That said, we could have a future we'd like if we planned for it? I believe we could do that right here in this room. It's time to wake up again. We could pitch candidates that would win around planning. Failing to plan is planning to fail. And the expertise in this room, the expertise in this community applied to planning. Who could beat this place? So would you just talk to us a little bit about your enthusiasm for planning? Because I've seen you at all of those meetings as long as you've been here.
Well, uh, I think a beginning would be nice if we would actually open up the neighborhood workshops in person.
Yeah. Because they've, they've been on Zoom now. It was a pandemic solution, but no longer needed.
And I've made that fight. I haven't been successful. But I think you need to express to the folks in power that it shouldn't have any problem meeting with neighborhoods. Because, I mean, the, the hotel, uh, workshops, the virtual workshops were a joke. They were, they were shut off. They were miscommunication.
Are you talking about the Siesta Key Benderson?
I mean, it's epitomized what was wrong with the, the, these virtual workshops that are supposed to allow more people to, to join in. We have to start, I, I think we have to at least start with that. The, and, and I wanted, and my question to Jonathan Lewis was, what's left? Because there is so much out there that has already been granted, that's already been, it's out there. It's in the planning stages.
Well, you know, ma'am, if you could make for my.
Well, so, so, well, well, so, so do I. I'd like to know what it is too. So that's why I asked, and, and they're going to get.
All right, ma'am, we'll be taking turns, so just hold your comments until you get one.
Hi, my name is Ed Braun. I'm a retired physician from the Boston area, now a resident of Sarasota. I like your planning ideas. Because I'm very interested in the Medical Freedom Act, which seems to have been railroaded through by medical freedom advocates without any real consideration. I'm afraid that what I see is that the chicken coop is being handed over to the foxes for reasons that are not quite clear to me. And I'm very distressed by the fact that in the future, as a resident of Sarasota, as I'm sure you all are, you're handing over your health care at some point in time to the Sarasota Memorial Hospital, which now doesn't seem to have the emphasis on following medical science as it used to have. If in Boston and in the, most of the rest of the country, we have faith in the CDC, we have faith in the United States Surgeon General, we have faith in the National Institutes of Health. In Florida, unfortunately to me, we have a surgeon general who wouldn't be accepted as a surgeon general in many other places in this country. And his views seem to be promulgated into this Medical Freedom Act. And I'm very pleased, and I did write you an email, that I was very happy that you voted against this. But what are the rest of us supposed to do now? What do you consider the drawbacks of the Medical Freedom Act? Which should be taken up as individual measures by the county commissioner? Or are we just supposed to throw up our hands and just hand things over to people that we really don't trust?
I do believe, or think anyway, that the folks that, that proposed it are, are shooting towards, uh, having an ordinance change. And so it's, it's, what was, what was passed is, is just, uh, window dressing. It's, it's, there's nothing to it.
And, you know, I spent twenty years in the pharmaceutical arena and have called on all the hospitals from Naples up to Brandon. SMH is, and then I called on hospitals in Hawaii and Washington DC and, and Pittsburgh. Sarasota Memorial truly stands out in the country and it is our public hospital. And if you want to know the reason this gained traction, is because we were asleep at the wheel with the hospital board. And people got elected to the hospital board who are part of this fringe medical freedom group. And they don't have a majority, but if we remain asleep and we allow that board to be taken over. The other thing is, um, there have been attempts, because remember, our former governor was, you know, with Columbia HCA and oversaw a massive Medicare fraud. And Rick Scott, when he was governor, wanted, uh, SMH to go private. Which, um, if you look at the services, private hospitals don't deliver babies if they can help it. They look for profitable medical services. And that is really not always in the best interest of the community. So, you know, we need to wake up at every level of government. I've been in rooms where people joke about the charter review board, like it's a nothing rate. This was about ten years ago. Well, there, there are people who are quite serious in Sarasota County about every race. And right now, they, it, it's gone way overboard. And unless we decide that those down ballot races matter and we want people with actual expertise, because SMH, the medical staff and expertise, and that would be a great race for you to get involved. I, I, I mean it. You know, I've, I've got a neighbor, he was the head of cardiothoracic surgeon at, at Columbia. And he's weighing in on a cigar bar down in Main Street that's allowing, you know, open tables, you know, with public smoking. Your voices matter. You know, I know you're retired and you probably just want to play golf. But that's the problem in Florida. We have a lot of really smart people who did not grow up here, who don't necessarily feel invested here, but they vote. And usually they'll just vote a party line and not really know the candidates. And to your point, those days have to be over if we're gonna, if we're gonna get back to the quality that we, we could have. Yeah.
Hi, Mark. First of all, I want to say thank you for everything you do for the neighborhoods. Thank you for cleaning up Leonard Reed Road. It looks fantastic. My name is Kelly Brown and, um, I'd like to know what thoughts you have on, um, you know, the, the city and the counties are giving the developers all these money, all this money and all these oversights to put in attainable or affordable housing and, and breaking all the rules for them. But what if we looked at it differently and said, hey, all of you people that have, now have Airbnbs, if you would all turn it back into long-term rentals, we'll give you something. Let's give them an opportunity to have a break on their taxes or whatever it is, to start renting to families again in all these communities. In my community alone, my street alone, in the last six years, we've gone from long-term rentals, families living in housing. I now have fourteen Airbnbs on my street. So what ideas do you have to maybe incentivize property owners to not make it an Airbnb?
Wow. That's tough. Uh, I guess we, uh, you know, if you're, it's everywhere. The Airbnbs are everywhere and, um, the city's got a difficult time, uh, more than the county because, uh, we have a thirty-day, a minimum for renting and, uh, in a single-family neighborhood. But in the city, there isn't such an animal, uh, ordinance out there. Seven days? You know, and it's, it's, it's enforcement. Well, well, I, I appreciate that compliment and I didn't know there was going to be a test. But it, uh, you know, when you, if you can make them live work and, and that type of thing. But when, when somebody's making an extra thousand dollars a week, it's tough for anybody to say, you know, the government's not going to pay him a thousand dollars a week not to do it. You know, that's, and so you, you know, I, I, I wish I had the answer. Well, they should lose the homestead exemption when you, when you turn the house into a commercial. Yeah.
All right. Um, thank you, Mark. Thank you, Kathy, for this. Uh, I am Richard Harris. I'm, I'm going to get a plug in for CCNA. On March second, our program is affordable housing and the homeless. You're all welcome to come and, and listen. So let me follow up with, um, this. What, and let, okay, a little editorializing. There are several of us in the city who believe that the county was going to be a big answer to the affordable housing problem. So could you speak to what the plans are in the county to address it? Thank you.
All right. Well, the, I understand. Uh, the, the, the Live Local Act with all its warts is probably the best hope to energize the affordable housing because of the fact that it, for those who don't know, it, it was to give incentives to developers to put affordable housing in non-residential zoning districts. Commercial, industrial, and I think maybe mixed use. Anyway, we, the older shopping centers are along forty-one. To me, that would be an ideal spot to redevelop and allow mixed use and, and affordable housing. Because there's parking there and, and, you know, it just, it just makes a lot of sense. It would help these dying shopping centers or struggling shopping centers. And in a lot of cases, these shopping centers are on forty-one with rather nice subdivisions behind them, especially on the B-side, that I think these are opportunities for, to really make a beautiful, wonderful gateway to these neighborhoods. So I think it would, that I think is the best opportunity, um, for us. Because you're also, the, the infrastructure's already there, the water, sewer, the traffic, uh, mass transit. It's just, it, it, we have to make it market-driven. Because sometimes we're able to work on, uh, c- cutting the impact fees and other things that, uh, maybe some tax breaks to get things moving. But, uh, the county isn't in the business of, of building affordable housing, nor, I think they should be. So you have to make it an incentive, either through whatever the government can do, which is usually impact fees and taxes. And permitting, permitting would be great. That's another subject.
I have a question. I'm new, a full new, full-time resident of Sarasota County, but I've been coming here on a part-time basis for over forty years.
And your name?
My, oh, I'm sorry. My name is Cindy Schalk. I own a property. I own a Siesta Key, and so I'm very interested in the Benderson thing. I'm very involved. But my, I have a very just simple logistic question. Are there candidate forums? Remember back in the day when there are elections and there are candidate forums? I haven't been here long enough and been a voter long enough in Florida to know. Do they have candidate forums? So, because I think that's a simple answer to a lot of problems. The meetings I go to, the citi, the people sit back and say, well, what can we do? What can we do? Inform yourself. Learn about the candidates. Vote for the candidates that represent your ideas and your values. But I don't know about candidate forums, so I'm glad to know there are candidate forums. And why, why do the commission meetings run from nine AM to six, five PM all, all day long? And you don't know, and the agenda changes and they go out in the hallway and vote and you don't know, yeah, what's going on? It seems to disincentivize people to attend.
Well. Well, I'm just saying, uh, we, we don't leave the dais and, and, and vote, believe me. But it, it's, it, no matter what time you do them, it, somebody's working. So it's, it's, it's tough. Uh, the, the agendas don't change, but what did change was the timing of them. There was an after, a morning and an afternoon session. And now it's, um, it just, it just runs. It just goes. So you have no idea when you're going to be up. And that's, that's unfortunate, I know. Because some things that you think are going to go quick, go fast and, or, or drag out and other things that you thought would just be easy, drag. other things that you thought would just be easy, drag on. And so, but, yeah, I'm there with you. I mean, there's no, there's no easy way to do it.
So the candidate forums, though, if I may...
Well, the candidate forums, you definitely need the candidate forums. And there's a, there's, I'm trying to think, when I ran, CCNA had a candidate forum, Michael's on East had their candidate forum.
The Tiger Bay.
Tiger Bay, I'm sorry. Tiger Bay.
Right.
Yeah. But, and, oh, and the Siesta Key Association had one out on Siesta Key. I remember I went to Arlen and Park, they had, they had one.
Were you, well, so here's my observation, I know Tom Matrullo has asked this question. We've seen candidates just not show up at forums. Not you, but you're, no, really, you're great, but, but...
Well, that should tell you something.
Right. So the people who feel like they've got it in the bag, we call them the anointed candidates who have a Pat Neal, shock and off fundraiser and get 100 grand to start. Teresa Mast is one of those candidates. She's got nearly 200 grand in her campaign fund. Alex Coe just filed to run against her. I doubt she will show up at many debates simply because she doesn't believe she has to. And that's a problem that we have.
Hi. This is really a great meeting. I'm Carol Lerner. I'm very involved in the school situation, and I think there are some interesting parallels and maybe some, some lessons. I've been involved, I've lived here over eight years, and seven years ago, I got involved because I was concerned with state legislation and how it was affecting Sarasota schools. So I started attending school board meetings, and soon after that, we developed an organization called Protect Our Public Schools, which has since moved in to support our schools. Long story on that. But what I want to say is, when I started attending school board meetings, they were kind of boring meetings, this was, you know, back before the craziness. Then, then the craziness started, and myself and of, and a few others were such a minority. There would often be just four or five of us at a meeting, and like 50 of the far-right, the Proud Boys and the Oath Keepers and the Alida. Parents. So what we did is, and it took quite a while, but we got people, getting more and more people, so we didn't have enough to make that change. But now, it's the opposite situation. Now at a school board meeting, it's generally about 90% of us and 10% of the other side. And, and we're consistently getting like 50 or so people, sometimes 100 if it's, if it's a big issue. Now, I think, I'm hoping, that's gonna actually translate to the school board race being very different on this round. If Bridget Ziegler leaves, we could even have a majority. That may not happen, but I think we probably have an excellent chance of winning two seats. Or keeping one and winning another. So my point is, now, I've attended county commission, but I must say, it's only been around big issues. And my guess is, if there's not a big issue, there aren't that many people, except maybe those with very narrow issues. There's not like a regular group, which there is now in the school board. We can always count on at least like 25, 30 people that are very committed and are there week after week. It's changed votes already on the school board. We have a decent superintendent in part because of that. So that's, that's my thought, and I'm wondering what you think of that.
Well, I'm not sure I want a mob to show up. But you should, you should show up if there's an issue that you want to be heard at, absolutely. I will tell you that if you have 25 people show up, you don't really need to have 25 people speak. If you have five people speak, and, and even if you just said, everyone who agrees with me, just stand up, that would, that would be, work just as well. Because we get the point, you know. I'm not gonna say we're gonna agree with you, but we understand where you're coming from. But, you know, I mean, there's been a few times we've had a good deal of folks there, and it's usually because if it's a neighborhood issue. And so, you know, I encourage everyone to come out, but I mean, if you're a little more organized, you know, just like I said, have five people maybe, because usually, the conversation's pretty much the same. You know, maybe a little twist here and there. But, but I, you know, I look at it, I'm an optimist by nature, in that if there's not a lot of people there, then we must not be screwing up too much. So, so I look at it like, well, yeah, we're doing okay. Because, you know, you know, sometimes you do great things and you don't hear a compliment, but if you screw up, boy, you hear it. So, you know, I hope that our commission never gets to be one of those dysfunctional commissions that, that some others in the area are. We have, we disagree...
Who are you talking about, Mark?
I don't know. I read papers, see news stuff. But, you know, we, we don't agree, the commission doesn't always agree. But we're always professionally cordial, and, and so, and I think you need to keep it that way. There's, there's been folks that says, well, Mark, why aren't you getting more upset? Well, I said, well, that's, we're gonna go on to the next battle here, you know, so we never make it personal. And, and to give everyone the benefit of the doubt, I'm gonna say that they all vote what they believe is best for Sarasota County. And just leave it at that.
Skip Parrish.
Yeah, Skip Parrish. Mark, you and I haven't met face-to-face, but we traded one email.
Okay.
And that was one of those emails that didn't get too much in-depth and maybe should have. And, you know, based on the audience here is a very pro-audience, I'm not gonna say anything derogatory about you or your commission, because I don't run that fast anymore. I, I sent an email to you at one point and said, you know, here's the state statute on the rules in the state of Florida, the law, for putting dissimilar sand on a beach. And I sent it to you in an email and had you look at this. This was before we had 180 dump trucks a day for 20 days, tearing up the roads on Siesta Key. And if you go out there today, and I go out, I'm there twice a day going up and down that road, and there's a big crack on the right-hand side where the trucks were full, and no crack on the crown of the road on the left. So that tells you how much weight went through there in 20 days. One day, they had 210 dump trucks. And it was a beach re-nourishment. And the state law is that, that you're not allowed to put dissimilar sand on a Florida beach. And there's a reason for that. So if you were a civil engineer and you studied particulates and surfaces, you would know that they move differently in layers. And especially in a marine environment, where you have waves. So after that, and after the fill was done, and when the beach started to change in Turtle Beach in that area, yeah, when it, when the beach started to change there, I asked our, your staff of the county, and the engineer graciously sent me all the documents that they had submitted to the state to give our county and your board permission to use and put that filter in. I said, what went wrong here? Because right now, this is one of the eighth wonders of the world, it's an ecological disaster. There are, there are sand piers that go out into the Walter Beach now, and they create rip currents, and they've decimated the subsea creatures there. That originally, and I found the problem, and the problem was that the original beach had been infilled twice without dissimilar sand on it. And what's really happened is, when we submitted, and the county submitted, the engineers submitted the permission from the state, there wasn't a correct analysis of what that beach really was. Sand beaches are lined beaches without scallops, they pack tight, the animals go in them, essentially, and the bigger animals come in. So it's even a problem for tourists and small kids. I swim, for health reasons, every day in the Gulf, whether it's rain or shine. I've been doing it for 70 years, when I'm in, when I'm in town. And I don't expect government officials to make all the right answers all the time. I've worked in the federal government a long number of years, and I still do. But this case, this simple act of putting sand on the beach has decimated ecologically that beach right now.
And this is which beach?
Turtle Beach.
Turtle Beach.
And the surrounding areas around Turtle Beach, okay? And it's because of the movement of the sand and the waves. And there's nothing that can be done about it. It would cost more to remove it than it did put it in there to begin with. But it's an honest error that was made, where whoever's working on it just used what the sand was on the beach that day. And that was two fills ago, number of years, Mark, you might know how many years ago we started filling that beach or re-nourishing it. The first two times, it was a coral reef, a million-year-old coral reef sand that had died. And, you know, when I was a kid, we'd go out there and dive on it with a lung, and the particulates in it were four or five times the size, the size of the natural beach.
So scary.
So this has been, you know, except, let me finish. There's nothing to be done at this point, except maybe a class of civil engineers who want to know what not to do on the beach. Maybe in Tallahassee, there's some DNR people up there that want to see an example of what happens. Kathy, you had a question?
No, I'm just, I want to know...
And it's not, it's not really, you know, it's one of those accidents that happen that devastates an area.
So are you wanting to know, like, what's the proactive plan for proper beach re-nourishment? Or should we be re-nourishing?
Well, I hope that this, I hope this is a learning process for the commission and even the staff, because it is a disaster. You just have to ride out there and take a look at it. Do it someday when they're, when they're whitecaps, when there's a little bit of wind. And if you walk on it, you'll see how unstable it is. You'll get stuck in it. And these piers stick out almost 50 feet in some cases. So the rips, they come down one side of it, go around, instead of going along the beach, they go straight out. And now, it's a hazard to our tourists and kids in addition to that.
Yeah.
So take a look at it, and I think it's a lesson learned. So the next time the county wants to do that, maybe they'll, they'll research and find out what the original beach was that was there before they started to fill, and they'll comply at that way. And the state, you know, just approves these because they're represented that this is the original sand on that beach, and that, that is a shell beach, always has been.
I think we have about time for one more question here.
I, oh, Susan, yeah.
I'd like to thank both of you for participating in this, and thank WSLR for putting this together. It's a unique, I've not attended anything like this in Sarasota County in probably 25 years. So this, I see this as a real positive sign that these type of events are gonna be held again. And thank you for coming out to Old Mayaca to see us. I'm one of those pesky keep-the-country-country people. I mostly want to focus a little bit on some of the process issues that Kathy raised. I spent 10 years in the county attorney's office about 20 years ago, and the processes that the county uses now, from my point of view, have been changed to repeatedly minimize and make more difficult interaction of the public with the county at all levels. It's more difficult to obtain documents. It's more difficult to get staff to respond to an email or a phone call. Not necessarily their fault, I think they're overwhelmed with work. But on the public side, it is extremely difficult to access information. Every time they update the website, it takes me two weeks to figure out how to find anything. Shortly after I left the county, they updated it, and I worked on developing the stormwater assessment program for Sarasota County. And when I went in and put in the search term "stormwater" and nothing came up, I knew it was really messed up. So that, it started there and it's gone downhill since, unfortunately. I'd like you to consider, reconsider your view of the number of people, number of the residents providing information. What I have found over the years is that residents are becoming better and better at making sure they're not simply repeating each other. And we are all learning to use facts to actually provide more facts to you. I think the commission is starved for information. You get deluged with paper. But I think the commission is repeatedly starved with the important information. For those two examples you gave, I wonder about where the developer was borrowing density from some other area. Was that something that's developed over the years? But residents understand how difficult it is for most residents to get up and speak in front of anybody, much less speak to the county commission. So I think it's important for anybody that wants to speak to you from that dais to be up there for their paltry three minutes, five minutes if they're lucky and the chair is feeling generous, when, from our perspective, the other side has been discussing with staff, working with them for possibly years, if not months. And quite honestly, I know that a lot of that information gets through to the commissioners. I'm not saying that it's done in illegal ways, but it just happens. So we feel like our point in the process is there to talk to you, because most of what we can talk about there, a lot of it we can't talk about to you to quasi-judicial matters. So, so we're limited. That's our, that's our moment, and we've gotta try and make the best, most of it. One of the things that I find is the commissioners don't rarely ask very specific questions. You are starting to make a change on the commission. I'm seeing you ask questions of staff and of the applicants, and sometimes of us when we're up there. And I think that's a very positive thing, because the more information that's out there, the better. Agendas used to be out more than a week in advance. I don't recall if it was 10 days or 14 days, but we have done that before. It was hard from the inside. But I, now being on the outside, you need that time to obtain more documents, because there's more stuff that shows up right at the end that you've never had access to before, and for staff to be able to respond to your questions. We can't expect them to drop everything and respond to our questions, you know, in a day. They do a really good job most of the time. Most of staff tries really hard. But it takes more than five days for that process to be happening, for us to be the most informed we can be when we appear in front of you. The agenda issue is insane. If you're working, you cannot, rarely can you spend all day at the commission meeting not knowing when your item's gonna come up. It was very easy for everybody to know it was a morning item or an afternoon item. You might still spend hours and hours there. But if the morning went fast, the commissioners went out and had lunch, or went back to their offices and worked. I, I think that was a horrible move that Al Mayo made when he was chair, and I think it should be reversed. I think you should go back to the old practice. I think you should go back to the old practice. One other point I want to make, and I'm sorry I'm taking so long. The county staff in December 2020 did a residential capacity analysis that showed, at that moment in time, the county had over two-hundred percent of available land, land that had already been approved for projected density. So they had double or triple the amount that they needed for the next ten years. That did not include Hyatt. It did not include Winchester. It certainly did not include Lakewood Ranch Southeast. When those developments and others that have been approved since the analysis was done, our planning expert, Charles Gaudier, determined that we have over five-hundred percent of the capacity needed. So that's certainly capacity for not just ten years, that's capacity for many decades of growth. There is no right to a comprehensive plan amendment. There is no right to a rezon. So the floating hamlet and village overlays, there's no right to apply them to that property, unless it's the right time and the right form. And instead, the county has repeatedly let not just map amendments be made, but text amendments. The text amendments, they look innocuous, but that's what's killing us. That is what has killed the 2050 plan, the promises that were made. There's nothing left of those promises. And there's got to be some change, and hopefully we'll get somebody on the commission who would reflect more your perspective of listening to the residents and trying to do the right thing. I won't always agree with you, I understand that. But if I feel like somebody's actually looking at the right part of the county that they make their decision on, and not just the developers, then I think we'll end up in a place that we could all be happy with. And again, I thank you very much.
So, Tom?
One last question.
Again, thank you, Commissioner, for coming out. You're the only commissioner I've seen in one of these many years. So thank you. The thing that I think people need to understand about this county is the trajectory. We started from a place where the public was very proactive, very forthright about saying, "We want to plan for the future." And that, I'm going back to the eighties now. In the past fifteen or twenty years, the movement has been to displace the public, as Susan and others have said. Meantime, the developers have basically over-capacitated the county. We have more capacity than we need. And yet, and this is why I'm speaking right now, we have people like D.R. Horton coming in saying, "We want to build a hundred-seventy-one homes right next to the celery fields," literally across the street from a very valuable public entity that we spent, the public spent fifty million dollars to develop, and is worth a lot more than that today. It draws tourists and so forth. I won't harangue you, I simply want to say, why do we need to respect this law of infill as if it were God-given? I have seen commissioners on the planning commission say, "Oh, it's infill, it has to happen." This is bullshit. This is just garbage thinking. There is no analysis of what is needed or what is not to be done. And if you have a bird sanctuary, leave a bird sanctuary. Leave a few, you know, a few acres for people and birds and creatures. Why do you have to fill it all in, especially given the current predicament of over-capacity? So thank you for thinking about this. And if you have a thought, I'd love to hear it.
I have lots of thoughts. But I'm going to take everything into consideration. Something that's coming up for a vote, I can't comment on. But I hear what you're saying. Compatibility is the number-one issue for me when it comes to any development, that it needs to be compatible with the surrounding people and environment.
We've got Jane, did you, Jesse, what, how long can we go? We're looking at a, because I know you.
Are we in overtime yet?
I don't know.
We have five minutes.
Five minutes, okay.
I want to thank you too, and I want to thank you for coming out to Ol Mayaca. Our county commissioner, who is Mike Moran, will not come out there. And it's really interesting to me, because I do not think that the people in Sarasota County would want all the land to be paved over in the way that it's, they've given way to. That there, and just like what John said before, we need a future. You know, our children, children do not have a place where they can have a little five-acre farm anymore in Sarasota County. It's not affordable, they're not making it available. It will not be there. And that, to me, is taking something that is so essential to, you know, human, just to humanity, and acting like that is the right thing to do, say yes to all this development. And I wanted to say two other things. One thing is, I do think it matters that people show up at the county commissioner meetings. And I'm always interested in what people have to say when there's an issue. And I would hope that the county commissioners would listen to the people, and that we care about Sarasota County. And if we're in this much, why are we doing this? I want to know, when you said that, like, about the other four county commissioners, I'm interested in what is their view for Sarasota County's future? I mean, what is it? Like, if it's in, for the good of Sarasota County, what is that? Because I'm wondering why anybody would allow what has happened in East Sarasota County to happen. I mean, it's so sad. It's like, it's a tragedy, is what's going on out there. And Lakewood Ranch, the other day, when we were, and this is another thing, I just want to say, they do that Microsoft Teams, it does not work. You cannot see the presenter, you cannot see anyone who asks questions. And the other day, I wrote the county commissioners, all of this, and the planning staff, that Katie put us on hold at fifteen minutes into the call, we never got back for forty minutes, thirty to forty minutes. So that is not, I mean, and it happened last year, the exact same thing. So, and we complained about it then. We used to have meetings when things like this were going on, so that the voice could be heard of the people. And we don't want to stop that. And Sarasota County is like one of the most unique and beautiful places. I mean, it is. It's just a lovely, wonderful place to live, our school system, I mean, everything loves so much about Sarasota County. The one thing is that we are paving over our country, and it is really a crime. And there, oh, by the way, there are other places in this country that don't allow that. They stop that. And they do say, "No, no, we're not going to do this anymore, wayside." So there's just so much. So please don't let the people stop coming, and don't, you know, encourage them to come to the county commissioner meetings.
I'm not saying you shouldn't come to the meeting, by all means. Everyone show up that wants to come. I'm just saying, when you start repeating yourself, it's not that productive.
I got it, but you know what? Everybody gets their five minutes.
No, no, I'm not saying, it's your right.
Yeah, I mean, and you do hear.
I'm just telling you.
I hear what you're saying.
You know.
Yeah, I know, and it would make time go faster, I know.
Well, no, 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 but we get the point.
I sit there all day, I know.
We only look stupid.
I understand, I understand. And we do try to do that. When we're organized, we actually really do try to say certain things. Everybody has your part.
Sure.
Can I make a suggestion? It's been my experience, given with any elected body, but I think especially the county commission, is that if you walk in and they know you have the ability to impact an election, they will listen. When we were saving a group of us Lido Pavilion, we got a petition together with over five-thousand signatures. City elections are decided by a lot fewer than five thousand, and they knew that. So, you know, at this point, if you want to be heard, you've got to get your mojo on, and you've got to get the names, and you've got to get people in those chairs. But more than that, you've got to build your own communication system that will drive participation in voting. And that is the only thing, litigation, litigation makes a difference, and impacting elections, and that's what we have to do.
And thank you for caring. Thank you, and thank you for listening.
And we need to support people who do listen, because it's unlikely you will have the same money. So, well, you know, you said it first, not me.
I know, I know, I know.
Right? I'm not, I mean, if you do, okay.
I'm saving my money, you know.
You know, there was a term I heard from John Thaxton, was, it's a cynical term, but it came from the development community. He was the token opposition. He was fine, "You're okay to have your one vote, Mark, we'll still give you money, but boy, if you start winning, look at what happened." Paul Carajulo's vote on the celery fields, I'm pretty sure that's, they sat him down and said, "Honey, you're done. You know, we're not going to, we're not going to support you anymore." He protected the celery fields, and then we got Christian Ziegler, for one term, but he became the district too. So this juggernaut of dark money needs to be broken with awareness and participation. Yeah. Thanks for coming, everybody. This is how it, this is how it happens, yeah.
Thank you all for joining us at Fogartyville Community Meeting Arts Center. Please don't forget, next Tuesday, we have our Thinking Like a Journalist Forum. We'd love to have you all there, Tuesday, 6:00 P.M. Thanks again.